Hafadee.
And good morning and welcome again to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order today's Monday, July 18, 2022, at times 8:40 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Monday, July 11, and Friday, July 15, 2022, and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal and livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notices were also disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. We have one agenda item this morning, and that is an oversight hearing on the Department of Public Health and Social Services. This is one of many legislative hearings held by this committee to receive updates from the Department of Public Health and Social Services on their efforts during the public health emergency. I've asked the department this morning to provide its status on the $5 million appropriated in fiscal year 2021 to the Department of Public Health and Social Services pursuant to Public Law 36-9 enacted on April 1, 2021, for the sole purpose of providing temporary assistance in the form of grants to be distributed to local nonprofit organizations that provide food and commodities for families with children, low-income children, homeless individuals, and unemployed individuals. To provide context for the listening public, the $5 million appropriation was authorized through an amendment I proffered during the discussion of Bill Number 40-36, now Public Law 36-9, which authorized the refunding of business privileged tax bonds to realize potential debt service savings. During the hearing on Bill 40-36, BBMR and the Guam Economic Development Authority testified that GovGuam could potentially achieve over $39 million in debt service savings, specifically $5 million in FY 2021, $19.9 million in FY 2022, and $13.1 million in FY 2023. So my amendment thus created the five, or directed $5 million of that savings to these food distribution. At that time, we were seeing lines at various food distribution sites and had heard of how food bags were running out within hours. And even now, as our economy slowly reopens and regardless of the regular safety net programs, the steady increases in the cost of food, utilities, and fuel keep our people struggling to make ends meet. So it is imperative that we continue to immediately prioritize and assist through these hard times while we continue to work towards rebuilding our economy. This floor amendment was passed with the support from Senators Perez, Senators Nelson, Senator Joseph Augustine, Vice Speaker Barnes, Senator Shelton, Senator Rigel, Senator Pito Turlahe, and Senator Moylan. Additionally, language was added to the last budget law for fiscal year 2022 to ensure that the $5 million appropriation, since it had not yet been used, would not lapse but continue to be available to the Department of Public Health. So we followed up with Public Health several times as to the status of this aid and were told, at first they were not aware, and then they had not received the money. And so just last week, I want to thank them for, they provided me an update that they finally had a draft plan. And we announced this hearing so that the public could hear this plan and how this food would be shared. Last Friday, the Public Health and the governor announced that the solicitation of nonprofits to partner in the distribution of the food aid was now being solicited. So we are grateful for this action and would like to now receive a clear picture of how quick this distribution can occur through this process and how far it can reach, given that only $3 million of the up to $5 million is going to be used. And I wanted to get a gauge, I guess, from Public Health, whether they find that the need has decreased since April 2021. And I know that we also distribute food through Medicaid coverage and other programs since then. And so I just wanted to get your take on that and, in particular, how soon can food get distributed under your plan at this point? And so I want to thank you, the Deputy Director of Public Health, who is here with us this morning. And you will introduce your team, and we have Carlos Pangolinen. And that they've both been sworn in already by our Sergeant of Arms. Thank you, Sergeant of Arms. At this point, I'd like to recognize the presence of the minority leader, Senator Chris Duñez. Thank you.
Good morning.
Okay, so I'll now allow you to have the floor, if you don't mind. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Speaker, very much, and thank you, Senator, for joining us. So if you don't mind, I'm going to initially read from my notes, and then, of course, we'll go from there. So Buenas en hafadee, Honorable Theresa Turlahe, Speaker of the 36 Guam Legislature and the Committee of Chairperson for Health, Land, Justice and Culture. Thank you for this opportunity to provide updates regarding Public Law 36-9, which appropriates up to $5 million of said revenues to the Department of Public Health and Social Services for fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022, for the sole purpose of providing temporary assistance in the form of grants, which shall be distributed to local nonprofit organizations to provide food and commodities for homeless individuals, unemployed individuals, children, and low-income families. My name is Terry Uggan, Deputy Director for the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and joining me today is Carlos Pangolinen, Management Analyst Four with the Division of Public Welfare, who is also managing and implementing this effort. It is the intent of the Department of Public Health and Social Services to assure the 36 Guam Legislature that funding made available will be spent in accordance with the intent of Public Law 36-9. The Department of Public Health and Social Services Division of Public Welfare developed the draft 2022 Food and Commodities Grant Application, Press Release, and Memorandum of Agreement. Ma'am, this was done during the time that we were waiting for the monies to be, the account to be established, the monies to be loaded. I did go into some detail as to what the application was to include, and I will go through that. Okay.
Terry, you're loud, but can you just put the mic directly in front of you? I just want it to be a little louder, if that's possible, like, straight on?
Okay.
Yeah, let's just try that. Thank you. Thank you.
No problem. And I do apologize, too. I'm still have a little bit of a residue of flu, so, all right. So during that time, we also went ahead and put together the application, the memorandum of agreement, as well as the press release. So I will, we did put a bit of energy into the application, and so I'd like to go ahead and go through that process, if you don't mind, okay? The application requires the following attachments: Certificate of Incorporation, Proof of Tax Exempt Status, GovGuam Vendor Number, Proof of Business License, and Nonprofit Organization Status in Good Standing with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. We didn't want to have a bunch of documents and proof of their status that was going to hinder the process, and fortunately, our nonprofit organizations usually have easy access to these documents. Interested nonprofit organizations shall select which category they are applying for. So what this application does is it actually allows the nonprofit organization to select from different categories, in which case Category A is for the purpose of non-perishable food items. And I did give examples in the application, which can be stored for long-time periods, such as canned foods, pastas, dried beans, and rice. The component for application Category B is for the purpose of perishable food items. I did give the example that these are the ones that needed to be eaten soon thereafter and is used to require refrigeration, such as produce, seasonable fruits and vegetables. And the component under Category C in this application is for the nonprofit organization who is interested in providing both perishable and non-perishable. The proposal component of the application includes the following. The nonprofit organization needs to demonstrate the capacity to produce deliverables as described in Public Law 36-9. Basically, they're describing the distribution of food and commodities to include types of foods and methods of distribution. I do know through past history that various nonprofit organizations have included other supports, like the mayor's offices and faith-based organizations. Provide a detailed explanation of food and commodities distribution plan. Work plan to include the hows, the when, the where, the what, and how the distribution of commodities will take place. Logistical and support infrastructure to include signage, traffic control, canopy, safety, security, shelving, storage, as needed. Ensure the compliance to food safety guidelines as provided by the Department of Public Health, Division of Environmental Health. And I did provide, and for those that did not get a copy, I did provide, okay, from the environmental health, some of those tips. Provide a plan to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19. When selecting food items, keep nutrition, sodium, and sugar levels of consumables in mind. Budget to include contracts, supplies, and miscellaneous. Scope of services applicant will ensure the prompt distribution of food commodities as outlined in Public Law 36-9. Community partnerships and engagements, such as the Mayor's Council of Guam, the Guam Police Department, private security companies, sanitation companies, and et cetera. All excess foods and commodities shall be reported to the Department of Public Health for immediate disposition. These items will be redirected to other populations in need of food and commodities. Therefore, we absolutely don't want to waste any food, and if, for whatever reason, anything is moving slowly, we want to make sure that it gets to the mouths of Guam's community. All compromised and damaged goods shall be accounted for and reported to the Department of Public Welfare. And sometimes this happens during handling, as we know that products will be going from vehicle to vehicle to site. Monitor and report number of individuals or number of family members served as outlined in Public Law 36-9. So we really want to gauge, not only the populations that we are intended to serve, but we also want to gauge the number that are there. We're not counting a family as one. We'd like to get at least a count of how many people are in the family. So if it's in a vehicle, and there are four, then it does go down as four individuals. All applications, proposal packets received on or before the cutoff date and time will be reviewed and assessed for and including workforce capacity, distribution ability, organizational layout, challenges, solutions related to distribution. The Department of Public Health and Social Services will contact each nonprofit organization to schedule time and date for interview. We will, we will, we will do this just as they pick up their applications. We can go ahead and be issuing their appointments, so there is no waste of time. The Department of Public Health and Social Services confirmed availability of funds and established an account to carry out the mandates of Public Law 36-9. Account was loaded totaling $3,150,862. A press release call out for nonprofit organizations interested in submitting an application proposal for the sole purpose of providing temporary assistance in the form of grants to be distributed to local nonprofit organizations that provide food and commodities for homeless individuals, employed individuals, children, and low-income families. The press release includes a pickup, drop-off location, and cutoff date and time for applications and proposals to be submitted. The last day for the nonprofit organizations to submit completed applications and proposals is 4 p.m., July 25, 2022. The Department of Public Health and Social Services reached out to government and non-government organizations in addressing the mandate of Public Law 36-9. And I, as, as the process to actually receive these fundings took a period of time, it did give us that opportunity to really do some homework, something, even though we want to get out these commodities quickly, it gave us an opportunity to reach out and to do a bit of networking. So we discussed with Deputy Attorney General Espodón the deliverables of Public Law 36-9 and gained insight as to who should be involved. Discussed with Mayor Jesse Alec, President of the Mayor's Council of Guam, the use of the village mayor's offices as distribution sites for produce, seasonal fruits and vegetables to the population identified in Public Law 36-9. Discussed with Mr. Robert Kono the need for press release to generate interest for this deliverable. Confirmed with the Department of Public Health and Social Services Business Office, we established the account for the $3,150,862 as intended, Public Law 36-9. Worked with the Department of Public Health and Social Services Business Office and the Department of Administration regarding grants to be given to nonprofit organizations that can distribute food and commodities, to include perishable and non-perishable foods. Discussed with Chelsa Munyabre, Director, Department of Agriculture, the capacity and the ability to local farmers to provide a reliable and consistent selection of seasonal fruits and vegetables. Provide overview of Public Law 36-9 to the Grants Management Office staff as GMO is the point of contact for nonprofit organizations to pick up and drop off the 2022 Food and Commodities Grant application. Partnered with the Department of Public Health and Social Services Division of Environmental Health for food safety, food storage, and food tampering flyers for nonprofit guidance. Discuss with Chelsa Munyabre, Director, Department of Agriculture, USDA funding targeting homeless individuals and families. Department of Public Health and Social Services Public Law 36-9 can strengthen the effort without blending resources as both agencies to provide food and commodities to similar populations. Recommendation to utilize Chamor Village as a potential distribution site. Guam State Clearinghouse Stephanie Flores assisted in the review of documents. The Department of Public Health and Social Services is aware of the number of homeless individuals and families living on Guam is increasing. Although the exact number is unknown, the presence of homeless individuals and families at shopping malls, streetlight intersections, gas stations, and beach parks is becoming a common sight in the villages such as Agania, Tumuning, and Tuman. The Department of Public Health and Social Services, like other government and nonprofit organizations, will continue to provide services to Guam's indigent and homeless individuals, children, and families. Once more, thank you for this opportunity to provide updates regarding Public Law 36-9.
Sisus Masi, Deputy Director Uggan.
Thank you.
I want to recognize the presence of another one of my colleagues, Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, Senator, for bringing her here this morning. All right. Thank you for the plan and for the, so it looks to me like the deadline for the applications is July 25, but you are accepting them on a rolling basis between now and then, and when they pick one up, you're going to set an appointment right away?
That's correct.
That's great. And that potentially, we can have more than one response, and you've got three categories, so they can pick one or more of those categories, I guess?
That's correct.
And that we're hoping to use several partners in this effort, and so, but you do say at the end that you recognize homelessness is increasing, and so can I take this to mean the need still there? The need has been there, and we will continue, despite other programs in place?
Yes.
That this is still something that can be used by those in need?
Absolutely. The Public Law 36-9 is very timely in that it does provide supports to the community for very vulnerable populations. And so although the increase is, is pretty much observation, because I think the point-in-time counts run a little bit behind, I think with every flight that comes in, I think with every job that is lost, or whatever the case may be, it becomes the potential for another individual or family to be without.
Thank you. And, and our observation, that I've heard several senators repeat, is that the cost of food has also increased so dramatically that it is becoming harder for working families as well.
Absolutely. And I, I know it's a global response, perhaps, to many factors that are going on, but food prices, gas prices, even rentals and so forth, are all going up. And again, it's, it's not even a national, it's more of a global of what's going on in today's communities.
I hope when this is, after the applications and the reviews and the, you begin actual implementation, that this service will also be linked into your one-stop, third-floor Bank of Hawaii services available to everyone.
Absolutely. And that, that one-stop shop area over at Bank of Hawaii is called the Relief Center, and although their focus is on the welfare component of food stamps and MIP Medicaid, also on the WIC, Women and Infant Children's Program for Nutrition for Pregnant Moms, as well as newborn babies. It also does focus on childcare services. And then it'll be an array of other services throughout our community that will be available up there.
Child care, the rental assistance, and the mortgage assistance also.
That's correct.
Can you just talk to the $3 million versus $5 million?
Absolutely. You know, I'll be honest with you, the bigger the pot, the better, obviously. And this is a particular area where, where getting food into the mouths of our community is very important. And I know that there are other avenues in which, in which a certain level of food distribution sites are available, such as our dialoguing with the Department of Agriculture Director Chelsa, and saying that her two grants that she received, both USDA, are much smaller pockets of money, but those we can actually strengthen with and encourage those that are applying for the USDA grants through her can also apply on, on this side for Public Law 36-9. And that can take those monies, and although we're not blending them, we definitely can be braiding them, and it will give a larger amount of purchase power to make more commodities available and food available to our community. So yes.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm grateful for your efforts. Of course, I was, you know, that I was very concerned about the delay. I couldn't see the need for the delay when, when in my mind, I remember very vividly the long lines for food. And those were heartbreaking.
Yes.
And they're still heartbreaking. And now I feel like there are no lines, because we're just not doing it that way anymore. So however, this ends up being distributed, your idea about Chamor Village, but all, it's nice that the nonprofits, too, can be creative in their ways of distribution. They have direct contact with these, you know, people in need, and hopefully can, the goal is the faster the better. So again, it's been since April 2021 that this appropriation was made. I'm going to talk to BBMR. I was hoping they would, we invited them to be here this morning, because I really did want a clear explanation as to why the amount is only $3 million versus $5 million that they're authorized to provide to you for this program. I don't see the need to be decreased, and I do see it to be urgent. And I, I'm hoping that your plan gets this food out urgently, that we don't get bogged down in a big bureaucratic or, you know, a big bureaucratic mess. But I see that you've tried to streamline in as much as possible, and you made promises here today to interview right away and issue, I hope, responses to these applicants as soon as possible. So hopefully in July, so I hope that that will occur. All right. So I want to recognize also the presence of the Vice Chair of the Committee on Health, Senators Sabina Perez. Thank you, Senator. So I'm now going to open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Chris Duñez.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker. I think you've covered it pretty much, and Terry and Carlos, thank you for being here. You know, as I was, I kind of leaned over and chatted a little bit with the speaker that, you know, this, it's correctly so, I guess, government is a bureaucracy and the bureaucratic process going forward here. You know, Terry, this just looks pretty standard operating procedure to me. So I concur with the speaker. I think the faster we get this program stood up, and I stand with her also in being, you know, concerned, and I hope that the additional $2 million will be available. Food is basic, and I know you know that. I'm not trying to soapbox or preach here, but I think that we have done a lot of this already throughout this pandemic, and it's pretty standard operating procedure for issuance of food commodities. And I think that hopefully this response will be quick, particularly by the nonprofits, because I'm, you know, let's face it, right? First of all, their outreach capability and the population that they deal with on a daily basis. The second is, is when you're really, really down on your luck and you're moving over to a food pantry, whether it be a faith-based organization, or whether it be establishment such as, you know, Salvation Army and the like, who are well-known, particularly during the holidays, but on a year-round basis, to have their need for their food pantries to be stopped. I, I think we can agree that we have a readily available source to vet properly and to move this project forward. I, I think it's not just pandemic and work anymore. I think we're all also very aware, food is just extremely expensive. And so I, I don't think it's going to get any better anytime soon. So I just would stand with the speaker and commend the efforts. Like I said, this looks pretty boilerplate, and I just agree with the speaker. I hope that this is recognized and gets out quicker. And I know that in the onset of this discussion, we were still uncertain about, and we will be uncertain going forward, of the stability of revenues. But I think it's clear now, we can see daylight for revenues to be robust going forward for some time to come. This has got to be the basic priority that we all could agree on. So once again, I encourage you to work with all the partners that are established here, and it looks like the effort's underway, but I'm sure the sooner the better. And so we look forward to the progress that you're going to make going forward, Terry and Carlos. Sisus Masi.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning, certainly, Terry, to you from Public Health. Sir, Telo, I know, would have wanted to be here this morning. Unfortunately, she had the passing of one of her staff members early this morning, because I know these issues are of tremendous interest to her as well. So my condolences to her and her office on the loss of her staff member. I kind of concur also, Terry. I think we can understand the speaker's position, and she was very adamant on the floor of the legislature last year, early on in the term, of wanting to ensure that money be put aside out of this refinancing to address what at the time was a critical need. I think we concur, certainly, as Senator Chris had mentioned also. I think we're all seeing it when we go just gross, just the basic commodities that you normally would get for your household on a weekly basis, eggs, bread, milk. I think we're all seeing the increase in costs, and certainly, our working families out there now are probably finding themselves in greater need than they normally would, especially if they have a larger household and children or elderly members of their family to take care of. And I, I think we're all in, you know, in unison and wanting to relay, wanting to see this facilitate as quickly as possible. I understand you have to go through these vetting processes with these nonprofit agencies, but certainly over the last several years, the result of pandemic, I mean, so much effort has been put in place to do these community outreach. I wish Senator Frank Blas was here also, because him and his organization has been very active in, in doing food distribution, particularly during the pandemic, for members of our community out there. Even the mayor's office, we've had private companies that have donated resources, food commodities, and our mayors, you know, have been out there trying to help facilitate to distribute. I mean, now with, you know, with, with the benefits of modern communication, I mean, our mayor, certainly in our village, is able to relay to the community to come down to the office, you know, these food pack commodities are available and, and they're, if it's not limited on who can get it, simply available to members of the village that are in need that can come and pick it up. So I, I think from our end, it's just how can we facilitate it? Because trust me, if a year is or more, which is how it's appearing, takes to implement this process, that is a very long process. And I don't know if there's a system Public Health needs to put in place, so this is just a normal procurement like other things, so it doesn't take this long for something that's so critically needed out in our community. Is there something that can help facilitate this process? Because it is, I mean, I had to go back and look at the date, because I go, wow, we discussed this a long time ago, and we've dealt with many bills since then. What, what has been the, the biggest challenge you're dealing with in just facilitating this whole process of, of getting the, you know, the, the food commodities acquired and distributed?
Yes. You know, that's a very good question, Senator. First of all, I think the biggest challenge, of course, right now, is the fact that the early-on setting, that the establishing, not the establishing the account, but the making monies or having the monies available. Clearly, that's, feels like 90% Clearly, that's, feels like 90% of the wait time, you know? Once the money's there, you know, fortunately, we didn't wait for the money. We started working on the application and the press release and the MOA during that time, so it was a very good team working with Carlos and the team at Division of Public Welfare. But that's the challenge right there, because once the money's there, we move forward. So it, that's, that's not necessarily a public health part, that's in the larger picture. So, but if you're asking me what my biggest challenge was, then of course, waiting for that money to be put into the account.
When did it become available? I mean, bond refinancing, there's, there are key timelines they need to meet to facilitate, get it on the market, you know, get the whole process in place and have the money available.
Right.
When was the funds, I mean, I know budget's not here, but from your position in Public Health, when were you notified that the funds were available for you to begin the process?
You know, and I don't have the exact date in front of me, but it really doesn't seem like it was that long, considering this has been a whole year plus in process. So I think confirmation, we're in July now, it was either early, earlier part of July, I don't think it was the last part of June, but it could have been, but the word came out, and then I said, oh, great, we can start implementing, we can start finalizing, we can start moving this whole process forward.
Are you talking June of this year?
Yes.
It has taken that long.
But I would need to verify, because I think it's on that, that paper for, for the account establishment. And we continue to network and work with folks. I do know that the whole memorandum of agreement, of course, is a process in itself, that, you know, there are certain challenges that line agencies have, bottom line, that autonomous agencies don't, and I know everybody here is quite aware of that. That's been in the making for some time. I would like to see it where Public Health has our hands freed a little bit in the sense of being a line agency where we can actually move forward with some of our procurement items a lot smoother.
Well, what has the holdup been for you from your end? I mean, I've been in both line and autonomous agencies. Is it the procurement process? What are you, you having to procure, facilitate with the nonprofit agencies, or what has that delay been for you?
No, I think our relationship with the nonprofit organizations are pretty well, and we do work with them on a daily basis. And just a side note.
Is it the procurement to acquire the commodities, the food commodities, or?
The, the process in which it took.
Or are you just going to give the funds directly to them, once you select the nonprofits, and then they can go facilitate acquiring the food commodities? How?
Well, in the presentation.
What's the process?
In the presentation, we talked about how we're going to help determine the capacity of the nonprofit organization, how they have the ability to safely get food out into the community, and of course, what types of foods there is, so whether it's perishable or non-perishables. So that was, that's one component of the process, a part of the plan. But if you're asking me, the original question is, what took so long, Public Health? I think we were waiting for the funds to become available, so I don't have control over that, and I, maybe the legislative body has more insight to what that process.
No, I understand, but like I said, I mean, if you're going to go out and execute this financing, this is not something they sit and wait for the dust to collect. I mean, it's a very time-sensitive process.
Right.
When they come to us to seek approval and get our, once they get our authorization, then the wheels start turning, and they're, they're very set deadlines on what they need to do, how, what they need to get, and how quickly that money is available. So I'm kind of curious why it's taken so long for you. You're talking just June of this year, 2022?
Yes, that's correct.
Just within this last month or month and a half?
Yes, correct.
Well, definitely, Madam Speaker, I guess we do have budget here. We're going to have to ask them, because this, to me, is really, it's unusual that it would take that long, because that's the whole, that's the whole name of the game. You want to move while the market's available and the interest rate is good, and that process needs to be executed. It doesn't drag out for months and months and months on end.
I guess we need to just clarify, because I, my hearing is not the best in this room. I tend to have the better ear this way, but I'm trying to look towards you, but.
No, the acoustics in here are not the best either.
I'm talking about the timeframe in which the monies appeared in the account? Is that, we're talking the same thing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
And that's one for you. It appeared in your account about a month and a half ago or so, in June of this year. That, for me, is the big question, why it would take so long to get into your account?
And I can, I can, I mean, I can verify the exact date, I just don't have it with me now.
Well, it's just something like this, again, the speaker is very, I mean, I, you know, I'm wanting to take this type of money and always put it into long-term investment because it doesn't come along very often.
Yes.
But she was very adamant on the floor of the legislature, and, you know, we ended up supporting her initiative that there's such a need out there, there are many people out there that were still in need in spite of all the services that were being provided, and knowing the sense of importance and urgency, these are like, these are not leave-on-the-shelf items. I know you recognize that.
Right.
From your perspective, but it's finding out why something that you would see as critical as getting food out into our community, which was the intent of this original $5 million, you know, a year, year and three months later, we're still not, you know, out the door, so to speak. You've got the framework that you're putting in place in the short time you've had the money available, but it's just unusual. I mean, it, just knowing the, the process of this, you know, financially, that their timelines, they need to meet at their end, and then the funds are distributed.
Right.
Why would it take so long to get in your account and not be considered a priority? Because we are looking at, as we would for medication, and I'm sure from your perspective of the needs of your agency, making sure you have the medication available is very critical to a lot of the services you provide.
That's correct.
It's absolutely necessary. It's not, you know, the nice extra things, shiny things that we can sit and wait for.
Yeah.
It's something that there's a critical need. So, you know, for us, those questions are there, and I'm sure when the appropriate finance people are made available, I'm sure there are questions we would ask, because the process of financing this, this money and getting, getting this money back should not have taken this long, that it would take so long to get into your account so that you can even begin the process of facilitating what you needed to do to get it out into the community.
Thank you, Senator.
So I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your comments, and thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. I actually am going to speculate, of course, because BBMR is not here, but I think it's only because you started, your department started to ask them, where is this money? Because I was kind of asking you, where is this money? Where is this program? It's been since April 2021. We know GITA did not delay in going out for bonds. Some of these bonds that we approved, the refinancing, they were on planes within, within a week or two, yeah, if not days. They, they were ready to go, and so I'm going to research the timing of when this bond was refinanced, but, but still, yeah. So I want to thank you, and, and re, maybe, I want to additionally say, I want to ask, has the director asked, can we get five versus three? Or have you asked BBMR, can we get five versus three? Because some of these things seem obvious to us, and they seem, they should be automatic, but we know now that they're not, and so it takes a little bit of asking, urging, demanding. And if you have to do that with BBMR, then I would suggest that you do that, that you are the ones seeing the need and that you, you have to be vocal with them as well, if you haven't yet, and tell them that the need is greater than three, if we can get the five now, or if they tell you they've got a plan to give you the two more at a certain time. Good, you can plan that way, right? But I just don't want it to be a policy that somebody, somewhere has developed that the need is less. I really want that to be clear. If you're saying the need's not less, I do not see the need to be less, so who is deciding that the need is less than 5 million?
Yeah.
Or did those proceeds savings that they estimated, were they wrong? I would like to know that as soon as possible, too, so I will follow up, but I would appreciate it, on your side, if you just demand more.
Absolutely, Senator. At first, I didn't question it, only because I remember reading, I think Public Law says up to 5 million.
Yes.
So I thought if it's less, then I guess it was less. But absolutely, we will, we will work with BBMR, and we'll find those answers.
Thank you, Sizus Massey. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for following up with the mandate of the law, and thank you to Deputy Director Uggan and Carlos, thank you for being here. So I really appreciate the holistic, you know, actually, first, I want to reiterate the sentiments of my colleagues that, yeah, if we can find out, you know, we can get up to the 5 million that was mandated by law, I think that would be very helpful for our community. But I do want to, I just want to also register that I do appreciate the holistic approach, coordinated approach that you took with, you know, developing these partnerships within the government as well as outside the government. One of the things that I'm very keen on is food security, and so I really like the fact that you're partnering with Department of Agriculture to utilize the farmers, the local farmers, to ensure that there is fresh local produce, healthy, 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 healthy aspect of the food commodity distribution program. I remember in the very beginning of the pandemic, you know, we almost lost that capacity of local farmer production. We were very close to losing that, and I think it's so critical when we think about the food delivery, that we have to incorporate our farmers. And so one of the things that was brought up was the Double Up Program. I don't know if you heard about that, but it's basically those that are purchasing food that are on food assistance programs, they can get double the amount when they purchase produce. And so this is something I think the Farmers Co-op was interested in doing. I think it requires some sort of equipment to do that, in addition to any other potential farmers. So if we can, perhaps, is this program going to be open to them as well? Because it, I mean, when I look at it, it's for nonprofits. To what extent are the farmers going to be integrated?
We, of course, followed Public Law 36-9, but in, in my research, I did find that there are farmers who do have nonprofit status, and so, of course, we will work through Department of Agriculture to work with them, and then, of course, eventually work directly with them. But I do appreciate that you have noticed really the detail. You know, first and foremost, we continue to be Public Health, and we are going to be a little bit more concerned about the Vienna sausage and everything else. And I do know we want to get food in people's mouths, but at the same time, if it could have a little bit more of a nutritional value, all the better. So we did insert some of that conversation in there, that when purchasing, you know, perhaps the lower sodium items versus the regular, you know, sodium stuff, but it's getting to the point where, of course, you're just getting some of it as to what's available, whether you're getting it wholesale or what have you. So, but thank you for that.
Yeah, and that also ties back to another feedback that I was hearing, is that a lot of them are not, they didn't like the state-side produce, and they much prefer the local produce. Also, a lot of the stuff that was given out, they didn't eat because it was, yeah, it didn't appeal to the, the people that were receiving the donations. So for instance, like the processed foods, I forget what it was, it was one of those processed foods that, you know, basically, they threw it out. So, you know, hopefully, we can, you know, tailor it to the taste of our community as well as the nutrition. And I think the more localized we go, it will do that. So I highly encourage that, if there's a way to incorporate that.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. I do know we need to continue to work forward with elevating our, our farmers, and that they're a big part of the sustainability of this island. And so when we can't find something at the supermarket, you know, being able to go into our own gardens, or being able to go to your neighbor's garden, and really be able to have that community, really does make a big difference. And you're correct, you know, some of the produce that we are getting state-side, whether it's through the processing or what have you, you know, doesn't necessarily have the same nutritional value and obviously the same flavor. So when you buy local, it's very noticeable in our onions and our tomatoes, and very noticeable in our bananas and avocados, and so, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
I keep thinking if we could buy out the inventory of the Farmers Co-op every day, it's a perfect distribution point.
Absolutely.
But I'll leave it to you. All right. And please, on your outreach, I hope it's an aggressive outreach, and that you keep us informed as well, and we can assist in that as much as possible, or in any other way that we can assist, please let us know.
Senator, I will say that I think of aggressive, I almost think of like Adult Protective Services and Child Protective Services, but, but I will say this, although there was the announcement regarding the availability of funds and application pickups and so forth, if it's slow to get a response and not to, to interfere with any type of system, but we, I have every intention on reaching out to nonprofit organizations and saying, hey, at least be aware, spread the word, you know, let's get it out there, let's bring it a little bit more grassroots.
Good.
It shouldn't just depend upon an article in a newspaper or what you hear on the radio, you know? And we know that farmers know farmers, we know that nonprofits partner with nonprofit organizations, so we really want to get that word out there.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Carlos. Thank you, Deputy Director Uggan. Thank you to my colleagues.
All right. Thank you, Senators.
Again, this is about food aid, getting out to the community as soon as possible. So I would appreciate all your efforts in this regard as soon as possible, and thank you for the efforts that you've made to date. So there being no further questions or individuals to provide testimony, this, this public hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 9:25 a.m. Sizus Massey. Take care. Be safe.